Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. Welcome to the 5:15 City Council Meeting of November the 7th. It's a pleasure to have all of you here, and we have some students, I think, in the audience, so if you're a student, just raise your hand. We welcome you here. I think we have some possibly CSUB and BC students who are here for credit. We also have a special privilege today to have our teens here from various high schools, and they're part of Teen Government Day. And we have a lot of parents in the audience, so parents, you are super, super important. Raise your hand. If you're a parent, or a grandparent, or a guardian, thank you so much for being here. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera.
I'm here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Oh, here.
Councilmember Weir.
You can answer.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you.
He's already taken the lead.
Now you've met all of us. So tonight, we're going to have each of these very outstanding students introduce themselves, and I have the privilege of introducing to you Mayor Ivan Hernandez. And his mom says he's an excellent son, so I know that's embarrassing, but you are. So, from Miramonte High School. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Ivan Hernandez from Miramonte High School. Yeah. So, I'm really into politics, and like being right now, sitting next to these council members is pretty rad. Sitting next to the mayor is super cool, and I really just want to pursue politics and law later in the future, so this is really an awesome experience.
Thank you. And so now, Ward 1.
Hello, my name is Jorge Lopez. I am from Kern Valley High School. My college goal is to be, to major in sociology. My GPA has been higher, has been a 4.0 or higher throughout my high school years. I am an honors and AP student. I've received awards in Rylla, in Boise State, and in many other clubs. I am ASB president and president of CSF, and I have done community service for the Rotary Club, the Exchange Club, Chamber of Commerce, and I am currently a catechist instructor at my church.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Parker Gianna. I'm ASB president at Centennial High School. For college goal, I plan to attend to a UCR Cal State and be a writing major and a minor in film. I am involved in Link Crew National Honor Society. I'm the president of Animal Appreciation Club at my school. We the People Virtual Business, and I'm in cross-country. I volunteer with my Animal Appreciation Club at multiple different shelters in the area, and I'm also very grateful for this experience today. It taught me a lot about how everything works here, and I'm grateful for everybody here in putting this together today. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Ward 3.
Hello, my name is Julie Garcia, and I'm the ASB president at East Bakersfield High School. I plan on going to Berkeley next fall and major in architecture and minor in sustainable environmental design. At my school, I'm involved in CSF, NHS, and I'm a member in We the People. And my school activities include being a varsity volleyball player and swimmer for two years, and I'm involved in ASB Student Council and Leadership for all four years. And my hobbies are designing and creating anything, whether that be posters or just canvassing in general, and I hope that'll transfer into my future work.
Welcome. Vice Mayor, Ward 4.
Hello, my name is Andres Moreno. I'm from Auburn High. My goal for college is pretty much to attend Fresno State, to get my major to criminal science, and my career goal is to be a correctional officer when I grow up. My activities around school-wise, I'm very active with baseball clubs and also the football. My hobbies around school, it's, I'm a four-year abbott student. This is my first year as ASB. Also, in Student Ambassador Council, and I think that's for you.
Welcome. Ward 5.
Hi, I'm Jessie Anne Solis. I go to Highland High School. I am ASB president. My college goal, I want to go to Cal State, Bakersfield. I want to major in ag business, and I want to compete athletic-wise. I do shot put, discus, hammer, and the weight throw, so I want to compete in track over there. My school activities that I've done, I was part of the biomedical program. I'm part of FFA, ASB. I did girls' golf, soccer, and track and field. My hobbies include making, or leather work, so I make leather dog collars as a little business. And yeah.
Welcome. Thank you. Ward 6.
Hello, my name is Shreeni Donnis. I go to South High School. I am the ASB president. My college goal is to attend Emmanuel College on a Wrestling Scholarship and major in math, so I can become a math teacher and come back hopefully and coach wrestling and teach math at South High School.
Say Ward 7.
My school activities, I am part of tennis, cross-country, girls' wrestling, and track and field. I am also part of the Color Guard, MS Cube Choir, and ASB. I like to run on my free time and spend time with my friends, and I help my church hold events and with Sunday classes on my spare time.
Ward 7.
Hi, my name is Erin Ramirez, and I'm a senior at Ridgeview High School, and I'm currently serving as their ASB president. Along with ASB, I'm also involved in the Drama Department, and I serve as the Drama Club Media Specialist, where I'm in charge of promoting all shows with flyers, videos, and all that fun jazz. I'm also a part of the CNH Kiwin's Club at our school, which is a nonprofit community service organization, and I humbly serve as the president of that club. I plan to attend the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising and get my AA in Visual Communications, and my B, Bachelors in Business Management, and hopefully go into either set design or event planning. I'm also involved in Link Crew and our principal Pat Group, which is a group of students that work closely together with our principal at our school. Some hobbies, I love to do graphic design, make flyers, videography, and photography. Thank you.
City Attorney.
Hi, I'm Marisi Lopez. I attend Golden Valley High School. I'm ASB president. My college goal is attend a four-year university, hopefully UCLA. My GPA has always been a 4.0 or above throughout college, I mean, college, high school. I take AP classes. I'm a CSF member, recipient of the Glendon Rogers Award. My school activities involve, I'm a four-year volleyball player, swimmer, ASB president. Hobbies, I do play guitar, I like to stay active, community service. I volunteer at my church, the SPCA Animal Shelter, and at the Hauchin Blood Bank.
City Manager.
Good evening. My name is Peyton Rens. I'm Liberty High School's ASB president. My plan for college is to attend Notre Dame University, and I plan to study industrial engineering and minor in theology. Currently at school, most of my clubs have to do with service, hence the minor in theology. I really want to go into service in the church and maybe go around the industrial engineering. Also, involved in running and tennis, and I used to be involved in soccer as well, and the majority of my time is attributed to the Four Dimension Program in town.
Development Services Director.
Hi, I'm Samantha Gero. I'm a student at North High. I'm a senior. My college goal is to attend Pepperdine University or UC Davis and major in political science. Later on in the future, I want to be a corporate lawyer. I'm an honor society student with a 4.1 GPA. School activities, I'm an ASB leader, Link Crew leader. I'm commissioner of social activities. And my hobbies, I like playing golf. I'm girls varsity golf captain. And community service-wise, I volunteer for the Daughter Project and Global Families. Thank you.
Public Works Director.
Hi, I'm Nicole Johnson, and I go to West High School. Over the time of my four years, I've been able to maintain a 4.5 GPA, and I'm, at the moment, I am Bella Victorian of my class. With that, I hope that I get accepted into Spelman College, which is in Atlanta, Georgia, to study psychology and social work. I am involved in West High School's Black Student Union, Outsiders West, the National Spanish Honor Societies, and the student body, and I, and I am the senior class secretary of my student body. I enjoy more than anything helping others, whether it be students or for general people. It is one thing to be blessed, but to show the same favor to other people in need has proven to be more rewarding for me. With my church, with my church's youth group, I am a part of our Youth, Youth on a Mission Program, where we plan, prepare, and pursue acts of generosity and love for our community. Like, we feed the homeless, and we sing to the elderly at the Valley Combaless at home. Thank you.
Well, welcome. Let's give all of our students a round of applause.
At this time, Noah Pitcher will offer the invocation. Noah is a senior at Bakersfield Christian High School and the head of the BCHS Political Club. Following the invocation, Jose Lopez, US Army veteran, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Lopez served in the US Army from 2005 to 2009. He was deployed to Iraq twice in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom, 2006 and 2008. Award II Army Commendation Medals, an Army Achievement Medal, and the Combat Action Badge.
Please stand.
Please bow your heads with me. Lord God, we come before you on this day with both praise and thanksgiving. We thank you for your all-just, yet full of grace. I express my gratitude for the many blessings that you have poured out on all of us, and I pray that we would not take them all for granted. We thank you for our great nation and the men and women that serve our nation in all capacities. Seeking to glorify you, we ask that you grant the men and women of our city council discernment and guidance that you would grant wisdom and clarity in their decision-making. I ask that you guide us all in accordance with your will, and we give all glory to God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Lopez.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, and in keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it's not allowed at other times of the meeting. And for safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the chambers. We thank you so much for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council.
Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you.
Please call the first public speaker.
Mayor Go, we have received 10 speaker cards, eight on one subject and two on a separate subject. The first speaker is Eddie Lane.
My name is Eddie Lane. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I live in the city of Bakersfield. For 14 months, I've been a volunteer with QUEZE. And what QUEZE is, if you haven't heard of it, we are a volunteer organization. I should, I should read our, our actual wording, so you know what we are. We are the Kern Welcoming and Extending Solidarity to Immigrants Group, and we go and visit people in Mesa Verde, most of whom do not have other visitors. So for 14 months, I've gone there and visited a man, and I've come to know him very well during my 29 visits. So well that I've sent him nature pictures. They don't often get nature in Mesa Verde. It's the detention center on, it's on Golden State, which is in Councilman Gonzalez's district. So well that I've also received correspondence back from him. Here's one, here's an example of a letter I had from him, says, "Hello Eddie, thank you for everything. Wow, that card means a lot. God bless you." This is typical of him. I also received from him a, a happy late Father's Day card from your friend. And he sent me, so kind, he sent me a birthday card for my granddaughter. So we've become good friends, and I've gotten to know his family. His parents are in Thousand Oaks area. He has two children, who they are, they are raising now. He's originally from Guatemala, so there's a lot more I could tell you about this man. But we found out only through the media, through the newspaper, that GEO plans to expand their, what they call Residential Treatment Center, which is there on Golden State. And I'm here to tell the council that this is not a residential treatment center. The man I visit, two months ago, was put in solitary confinement. When he came out of that, after working so very hard on an asylum appeal, his spirit was broken and he gave up. And he told his court-appointed attorney that he's, he's willing to be deported and leave his connection with his family and his friends. I was shocked and stunned, and still feel so badly that this man's spirit is broken because of the solitary confinement that he went to, and I could not visit him then. I was prohibited to visit him. I don't think his case is unusual, but before, and eventually it will, before this issue comes back to the council, I would encourage the council, especially the councilman who, whose district this is in, to visit the facility. There's a series of questions I've given to the mayor and the councilmen, and ask those questions about solitary confinement. Is this the Bakersfield we want? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Just a reminder that there is no applause. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Pat Nolan.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. (LAUGHING). Thank you. My name is Pat Nolan. I live in Ward 2. Andre Gonzalez is my representative. And I was shocked last spring to find out in Ward 2, there is a prison. And we just, as an audience, pledged allegiance to the flag, justice for all. And we have found that justice is not being served for all. The private prison company, GEO, houses as many as 400 asylum seekers and immigrants in Mesa Verde, an inconspicuous building at 425 Golden State Avenue in Bakersfield. Most people, myself included, don't even know the building is there. It is a shadow prison, warehousing forgotten detainees. GEO is ICE's second-largest private prison company in America. What happens inside Mesa Verde, however, is largely a mystery, because GEO is a private company. It gets to evade most of the transparency requirements that a government agency or prison would have to follow. These private prisons operate in the shadows, effectively free from public scrutiny. According to GEO's service agreement with ICE, only ICE and the City of McFarland have the right to perform periodic inspections of Mesa Verde facility. The City of McFarland is paid monthly administrative fees in the amount of $2,916.66. That is $34,999.92 a year. What jurisdiction does the City of McFarland have in the City of Bakersfield? McFarland is 26.2 miles away from the Mesa Verde facility. After an unannounced inspection of a GEO detention center 85 miles northeast of Los Angeles in Aldeondo during May of this year, 2018, the Department of Homeland Security Office of the Inspector General found significant health and safety concerns in the facility. The GEO group has a long history of problems and litigation, not only in California, but around the country, in Texas, Colorado, and Washington State. Allegations of maltreatment concerning medical and medical health services have been reported as well as abuses that violate the most basic human and constitutional rights. I am asking the City of Bakersfield...
Ms. Nolan, your time is up. Please, thank you very much. For this group, we have eight speakers who would like to speak on Mesa Verde. We have 15 minutes per topic, and so we've already used six minutes of those. So the rest of you, if you'd like to either relinquish your time to another speaker or just condense, just so we can cover that. And then, Madam City Attorney, is there a clock for the 15 minutes? I don't see that tracking right now. There we are. Okay, we're good. Next speaker, please.
Bob Coons.
Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Bob Coons, and if I have a few minutes, I'd like to give it back to Pat to finish it. I've visited people that have come from all over the world that are in this detention center. They are some of the finest people I've ever met in my life. They are not experiencing life as it should be. We are concerned. I talked to one person that had gave up because of, his next trial would be nine months away after spending four years in prison, trying to begin a chance to become an American citizen, as the rest of his family already is. I asked him, what would he, what would he say to this unit here and people in Bakersfield? And it's almost like Christ's sermon in his own words. He said, "Love God." He also said, "Love one another." And he also said, "Treat us as you would like to be treated." That is all they're asking for. And for people to be in prison for that amount of time without hope, and the amount of hope that is there is often internally from people themselves that are given that, it's something we all need to be concerned about. Every single day, $8.43 million is spent incarcerating people that are looking for asylum in those areas in the United States. This is a waste of money. There are people that I would bring home to me right this moment, to live with me, that need to be addressed. And if I can, you have a couple things for Pat to finish with.
We're actually, her time is up, and we're going to run out of time, so we have 15 minutes total. So if you want to go ahead and, okay, all right, thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Ann Silver.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Ann Silver, and here we are talking about expansion of prisons for asylum seekers. Can you hear me? When, according to a treaty we signed back in 19, our country signed back in 1968, there should not be prisons for asylum seekers at all. I want to give you just a little bit of background about that treaty, in case you are not familiar with it. Actually, starting in 1951, after dealing with the horrors of World War II and the displacement of so many persons, the free world sought to protect refugees and asylum seeker, persons by an international treaty. And it was called the Refugee Convention, and spelled out to protect all the refugees and asylum seekers regardless of place of origin. I'm trying to hurry. This document continued to evolve, and was called the 1967 Protocol. In 1968, it was expanded and signed by the United States of America plus 144 other nations, and, and now I think it's 145. Here's just an excerpt, definition, "An asylum seeker is a person who owing to a well-founded fear of being persecuted is outside the country of his nationality and is unable or owing to such fear unwilling to avail himself of the protection of that country, a few points of the many. Asylum seekers only have to be on US soil. They are not required to come through a port of entry. They have the freedom of movement. They have one year to apply for asylum. They cannot be charged with a crime for entering our country. Family units must be kept together and adjudicated as a single application. They must be granted access to legal counsel and the courts. There can be no bias in determining asylum. Their religious beliefs must be honored." But then, the immigration policy began to emulate the criminal justice system in the 80s, and they started the imprisonment of these immigrants. And although this treaty is legally binding today, there's no body, no group to monitor compliance. And now, you know that separating parents and children along with illegal imprisonment are human rights violations and constitute a crime against humanity. Instead of following the principles of this humane treaty, we are building more prisons to house innocent people. Can you show the world that you have heart? Don't allow ICE to expand prisons for innocent people. If you haven't, be sure to read the One Book One Bakersfield selection, Incarcerations Nations. And furthermore, why don't you go to the Mesa Verde Prison yourself and interview these people, and you will hear their horrible stories. I wish I could share some of them with you. Don't imprison these innocent people.
Thank you, Ms. Silver.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Go. I want to thank the group for attending tonight's meeting and for speaking. I've met with several groups who have had similar concerns about this particular facility. I've met with them outside of the council chambers. I hope to have an opportunity to meet with all of you in the same fashion. I have a couple of questions, if I can, to Ms. Kitchen. It's my understanding that the facility has been, has served as a detention facility of sorts since 1987. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Gonzalez. Within the city of Bakersfield, any facility of this sort would require approval of a conditional use permit, and one was initially approved for this site in 1987 and operated since, through to 2009. A second conditional use permit was then approved in 2013 for the current operator.
And with that conditional use permit and the existing use, what authority does the city have?
Beyond issuing the conditional use permit, there's very little. Since it is a federal facility, there is a memorandum of understanding between the city and the operator of this facility that they have jurisdiction over the operation and policing of the facility itself.
I'd like to ask if perhaps city staff and I and the group can meet and have a longer conversation about this issue. We can. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about three minutes left on this topic, so there's time for one more speaker. Madam Clerk, would you please call the next speaker?
Margaret Clay.
I'm going to give up my time.
David Stabenfeld.
Please introduce yourself.
David Stabenfeld. About four years ago, I was introduced to Mesa Verde. I'm a pastor, and one of our members asked me, "Have you heard about this place?" I said, "No clue." So about two years ago, a bunch of us clergy went and... So about two years ago, a bunch of us clergy went and visited, having tour with the warden, as well as the Assistant ICE Representative here in town. After going through the facility, I sat there with one question. Who is my neighbor? The people who were in 100-bed wards, no privacy. They were there despondent, fearful, and wondering where in the world people cared about them. So my question to us in the faith community, as well as us as citizenry, is this: Who's our neighbor? And how is it that we're going to treat those who are seeking asylum in our wonderful nation? Is it to lock them up in 100-bed wards with not a whole lot of hope? There's a wonderful story that Jesus told. He said, "There was a man who had robbers punish him, and those with titles were walking by and ignored him." A lot of us have titles. I have titles. It's easy to walk by and ignore. But then, something happened. Somebody noticed the humanity of the man who had laid there bleeding and hurting, and he offered help. And I guess at this moment in time, I hope that we in the city of Bakersfield begin to notice and to offer help, even though it may not be in our jurisdiction. We need to pay attention. It's vital, for they are our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. There's probably time for a very short statement of about 41 seconds. Madam Clerk, next person, please.
Toni Amorante.
My name is Toni Amorante. I'm a resident of Ward Three. About 10 days ago on Friday, I got a call, 3 o'clock in the afternoon. The lady is Maria Ariano. She's an attorney in San Francisco, and she tells me there's an asylum seeker who's getting let out at 5 o'clock. Usually Jeanie Parent takes care of these people. She's the head of Quezzi there. Jeanie's had surgery. They called me, picked this guy up. Otherwise, what was he going to do? Poor guy is from Cameroon. He's an asylum seeker. I took him home, gave him a place to sleep, and a shower, and some breakfast, and we got him on the bus the next day. But these are the kinds of activities that Quezzi is taking care of. And if you make this place bigger, there's going to be more people falling through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for being so respectful of the time. I know that you'll be able to share further with Councilmember Gonzalez. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
John Spalding, regarding national apprenticeships.
Welcome, Mr. Spalding. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Go, members of the council. My name is John Spalding. I'm the Executive Secretary of the Building Trades Council here in Bakersfield, and I wanted to invite you to attend the November 14th and 15th Annual Women in Trades Workshop and Student Apprenticeship Workshop, sponsored by the Kern Community College District, during National Apprenticeship Week, which is observed by our Labor Council, or our Building Trades. These events are designed for high school students and some college students to be exposed to working in the trades associated with industry, construction, and the utility industries. We are holding the Women in Trades Workshop on November 14th and the Student Apprenticeship Workshop on November 15th. Both days, students will hear about what it is like to work in the specific trades, and have an opportunity to visit a variety of booths and work hands-on projects and simulations, which will provide a deeper appreciation for those that work in the trade. The Women in Trades Workshop is particularly meaningful, as women are underrepresented in the construction trades, and having the data themselves, the young women are more comfortable rolling up their sleeves and participating in the hands-on activities. They also get to hear from tradeswomen working in the trades. Both days are sold out again this year, with over 200 students scheduled for each day to attend the event, which is hosted at the Kern Electrical Apprenticeship Training Center at 3805 Select Avenue, Bakersfield. And if you're able to attend, both workshops start at 9:30 in the morning. Be more than happy to have you come out and visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mayor Go, the last speaker for this evening is Cindy Para, regarding TDA bike and pedestrian grant.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and future leaders. My name is Cindy Para. I'm here tonight representing the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Coalition, and I just wanted to thank the city of Bakersfield in continuing to go out and find funds and grants to improve our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And in particular, I don't see him here tonight. I think it's his last night tonight, but I'd like to thank the City Manager's Office for having Chris Gary kind of be our unofficial bicycle and pedestrian coordinator, and the hard work that he put in in going out and getting TDA grants and ATP grants, so that we can continue to have safer streets for pedestrians and cyclists. And I would just like to say we'd like to continue that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Para. At this point, we want to thank all of our students for being here, family. Also, thank you for your support. And at this time, we're going to take a very brief recess, so that you can leave if you need to leave, or if you want to continue to stay here, go ahead and join us in the audience. But thank you all so much for being here. All the best in your education and in your future days. Madam Clerk, would you read the next item, please?
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AO for approval. A staff memorandum has been received requesting item 8Y be removed from the agenda.
Vice Mayor?
I'm sorry. You said AO. I had AP. Okay. I would make a motion to approve items 8A through AO, excepting item Y, which we are deferring.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Under New Business, Item A, a resolution setting the dates of the regular city council meetings, budget hearings, and department budget presentations for the calendar year 2019.
Mr. Muckus, are you presenting this? Or Mr. Tandy?
I wasn't planning to, but—this is just our regular resolution, Mayor, that we adopt every year. The calendar is attached to the resolution for your review. If there are any meetings that you need changed, we need to do it at this meeting. Thank you.
I would move to adopt the calendar as presented.
Oh, there is a buzz-in from Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have it right in front of me, and I can't find it, but is there a meeting scheduled for June 26? If there is, I most likely will not be able to make that meeting.
And I won't be here during that.
Just so that the council is aware, that is budget adoption time required by state law to adopt the budget before the first of July.
We're scheduled for our sister-city trip during that time.
Let's move it up a week.
Mayor—
Move it to the 19th, if you like.
Yeah. Councilmember Weir, there is a meeting set on June 26, but the previous meeting is set on June 5. So if the council is so inclined, there's three weeks in between the June 5 and the June 26. So if the council is so inclined, you could move the June 26 meeting to June 19. That would then make it, though, just so you know, four weeks between June 19 and the July 17 meeting.
I wish that helped, but it doesn't.
Okay.
I believe we're back on the 27th.
Again, potential—potential solution, we could—well, as Helen indicates, you need to have that meeting at the latter part of June before July 1. We could call a special meeting if, again, four of you are so interested.
If a special meeting would be fine, but I just can't make it that week, the 19th through the 26th. We'll come back on the 27th. I'm trying to find the calendar, but I can't find it.
Is there a date that you would recommend, Steph?
Well, I—international travel can be trying, and so I'm reluctant to ask you to do it on the date of your return.
You can't.
The afternoon of the 28th?
I can't find it here. What day is that? Is that our—
Friday.
Is it Friday? Well, that works—for me, I'm sure. Friday the what?
That would be June 28.
Oh, I'll try and make the motion and see if anybody else has a problem. So accept the calendar as presented, except for the June 26 meeting. Move to June 28.
I don't see any request to speak. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Thank you for accommodating that.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under New Business, Item B, resolution declaring a shelter crisis in the city of Bakersfield pursuant to Senate Bill 850, and in accordance with the requirements of eligibility to access state homeless emergency aid program funding.
Mr. Tellia.
Good evening, Mayor Go, members of the council. Steve Tellia with the City Manager's Office. I'm going to provide you with a brief presentation regarding kind of the reason why we have this resolution before you tonight. If I can pull up the presentation here. So the main topic of tonight's presentation is the homeless emergency aid program, or HEAP funding, which is the reason why we have the resolution before you tonight declaring a shelter crisis in the community. Just a little overview of what I intend to cover in the presentation. I will talk a little bit about the origin of the HEAP funding, the program eligibility and requirements of the program, some collaboration that has been done with the Kern County Homeless Collaborative, which is required to access these funds, some proposed projects that we're contemplating, and the next steps related to achieving the application for the funding and to move forward with the project. So you may all recall that at the beginning of this year, the Big 11 mayors, including our own Mayor Go, united to urge the legislature to allocate a portion of the state's funding or the state's surplus, and to address it, to allocate that down to jurisdictions to deal with the issues related to the homeless crisis throughout the state. At the time, the Big 11 was suggesting that about $1.5 billion of the estimated $6.1 billion surplus be utilized to that end. There was some legislative support early in the effort to advocate that position, and that led to conversations with the governor and the legislature that ultimately led to $500 million in HEAP funding being included in the state budget. And just a couple pictures that were included, the letter that was authored by the Big 11, and then some pictures from an advocacy trip up to Sacramento, where the Big 11 was able to meet with the governor and legislative leaders. So a little bit about the eligibility and requirements. As I mentioned, the $500 million is kind of unique. They're really—this is one of the probably rare times where the state is allocating funding in a very expedited manner, with limited restrictions on the funds. They did allocate the money in several different pots, primarily allocated towards continuums of care in communities and to the 11 largest cities of the state. There is $250 million that is allocated to continuums of care based upon the point-in-time count numbers, and that is equating to about $2 million roughly to our Kern County Homeless Collaborative. There's another $100 million pot that is based upon a pure percentage of the homeless population throughout the state, which yields about $635,000 to the collaborative. And then, because the city of Bakersfield is one of the 11 largest cities, we are eligible to receive a portion of a separate pot of funding, which is $150 million, and that would equate to roughly $1.2 million directly to the city of Bakersfield that we get to apply for. The funding is one-time in nature. It's for emergency assistance. It's really intended to get down to the city jurisdictions and start to get out on the streets to assist with the issue that many cities are facing regarding homelessness. It is intentionally broad in terms of the applicability. It is really designed so that local jurisdictions can tailor the use of the funding to fit local needs. Just some of the key components of the program. The application period for the funding, there's really two phases, two rounds, but I don't think anybody wants to wait till the second round. So the first round of funding is from began September 5, and will go through December 31 of this year. It requires a local collaborative process, which is tied to the work we've been doing with the Kern County Homeless Collaborative and some of our local providers. A resolution declaring a shelter crisis is required prior to applying for the funds for the large-city applicant pool, so that is why we have this item here tonight before you. 50% of the funds must be obligated by January 1, 2020, and 100% of the funds must be expended by June 30, 2021. And there's an additional caveat that 5% of all awarded funds must be set aside to assist homeless youth, which are between the ages of 18 and 24. So a little bit about the collaboration. We've been working for several months now with the Kern County Homeless Collaborative and a number of our local providers regarding discussions related to the most appropriate use or effective use of this round of funding. The collaborative, I should note, is also receiving additional funding through a separate program called the California Emergency Solutions and Housing Program, or SESH. They're eligible for about $1.2 million. So in the discussions with the collaborative, the expansion of shelter beds in our community, which are significantly needed, was identified as a best use for the city's direct allocation of HEAP funding. The Kern County Homeless Collaborative took the funding that they'll be receiving from the HEAP program, as well as the SESH program, combined that, and issued an RFP to the local service provider community to identify various categories of programs that are sought to be funded, and this allows various vendors or various service providers to apply, to receive funding, to achieve the various program goals that were identified in that RFP. And just to talk a little bit about that, you have a list here in front of you. There's a number of different service provisions that are included in that RFP, anything from coordinated entry system to supporting homeless youth, new families, single women— coordinated entry system to supporting homeless youth, new families, single women's shelter beds, low barrier beds, hotel vouchers, rapid rehousing, so a whole array of services that are intended to be supported by this round of funding. So a little bit about the projects that the city's been discussing and what we would use our direct allocation for. So we've been working with the Mission at Kern County, one of our large shelters in town, and we're looking to do a project that would actually expand their current facility and expand their capacity by about 40 beds. There's a picture here before you where you can kind of see a portion of their emergency shelter space that is currently used as, as kind of a day center environment. We would actually be retrofitting this, providing the funding for the, the mission to retrofit this, expand into the space you see here, and provide additional beds for those that need them in the community. In addition, as a second component to this, this project, and kind of a focal point of it, is that the mission has acquired or received a, a facility here located at 800 Baker Street. It's at Baker and East 21st Street, and they had intended to retrofit this facility and create a community resource center. And the funding to do this is timing perfectly with this opportunity with the HEEP funds that the city is receiving, because I think this project was kind of intended and there was a vision for it, but the funding to achieve it was missing. And so the timing of, of this funding coming is able to marry very nicely with the intent of the mission to bring this facility to bear. So you would have the addition of 40 new bed spaces and a community resource center where people in, in the area and throughout the community can get off the street, can get out of the heat, get out of the cold, they can get something to drink, use a restroom facility, and most importantly, access services so that if, if there's some link that needs to be made to get them off the streets or get them in, into a situation where they can avail themselves to services, this is a good resource center where they'll be able to do that. So in addition to the projects that we're contemplating with the, the mission, as I mentioned, we have a requirement to set aside 5% of the funding for assistance for homeless youth. The Kern County United Way already has a program where they administer some funding for, for this purpose, so we would envision allocating that 5% portion to the United Way so that they can assist with distributing those funds as they do now. Separate from the HEEP funding, but, but part of the larger perspective of dealing with the homelessness issue, the city's also identified some available CDBG money from past years, and we are looking to utilize those funds to do a similar type project with the Bakersfield Homeless Center, where we would be able to add up to about 40 beds for unaccompanied women. And you may recall earlier this past year that one of the gaps in services that was identified was the issue related to space for unaccompanied women. And so we're working currently with the homeless center staff there to work out the details of what that project will end up consisting of, but that's the goal, is to expand that facility as well with a different pot of money. So what are the next steps? Following the adoption of the resolution tonight, staff will move forward with preparing the application to the state. The funding timeline is that no later than January of 19, we should receive our award, and then the funding distribution should begin no later than April of 2019. It's very likely that this time period could be expedited, but that's the, the parameter that we are given through the, through the noticing. You will likely see additional actions that are brought forward to the council in subsequent months, and what those actions would most likely entail would be some sub-recipient agreements that would, that the city would do with the mission, with the United Way as the, the end users of the funds. You may also see a HUD Action Plan Amendment that would be necessary to program the past CDBG dollars to facilitate the project at the homeless center that we're discussing with them currently. Just to kind of sum up what we're looking to do, the, the proposal that we're really bringing before you would expand the two largest emergency shelter facilities we have in our community by roughly 80 beds, and we would also be able to realize a new community resource center to help assisting those with suffering from the various issues of homelessness. That's a pretty impactful set of projects. It is something that we think can be delivered in the time periods, well within the time periods associated with the HEEP funding, and really start to kind of move the ball in, in addressing the homeless issues that we are seeing here locally. Additional space is something that has been identified as a critical need. So just to kind of conclude a little bit and kind of sum up the funding that we're talking about, when you combine the, the funding that the city's eligible for directly along with the HEEP funding that the collaborative would be receiving, in addition, is there SESH funding, as well as the CDBG program money that we're, we're identifying, you, you will see roughly a total of just over $6.2 million in one-time funding that we're able to utilize to expand homeless shelters and services in our community. So with that, I've provided a motion for you to consider, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I do know that we have several representatives from both the Mission and the homeless center here, as well as the United Way, so if you have any questions for any of them, they're here as well if, if need be.
Thank you, Mr. Tellia. Councilmember Freeman.
Steve, do you know how long once the funds have, first, how long does it take to get the money, the funds, and then do you have any idea how long it will take to construct the beds, to get all 80 beds operating?
Sure. So we're, we're in the very early stages of developing the plans for the projects. What I can tell you is in terms of the funding, it, it, we should receive the funding in one lump sum no later than April of, of 2019. It may very well be sooner than that. Once we have the, the funds in place, I think we're not going to wait for the funds to be allocated to us to start moving forward with the preliminary planning and everything that needs to be done to bring the, the projects to realization. The conversion of the, the shelter space at the mission to add the beds is probably the easier portion of it. I think the retrofit of the existing facility, 800 Baker, will take a little bit more time, but I do believe we, we feel that probably within the year that, that could be achieved.
A year after you receive the, the money?
I would say probably within a year from the time you receive the money, correct?
And also, how many, and maybe Louis or someone else knows, how, how many beds do we need, you know, right now? If we have 80 beds, do we need another 80, or would we, you know, would 80 suffice? What's the estimate of how many we need to house the people that actually will come and stay in the beds?
So that's an interesting, interesting question. I know that Mr. Gill has some information, and Mr. Baldovinos probably does as well, so I'm going to ask them to come up. But what I can tell you is that the current space that the mission, and I think definitely I know about the homeless center has, they are already over, well, they probably don't want me to say this, but I know that the capacity that they have now is currently utilized on a nightly basis to their full capacity, and maybe even a little bit more than that.
Good evening, Councilman Freeman. We operate at capacity on a regular basis, and unfortunately, for a period of time now, we have individuals calling, seeking emergency shelter, and we simply cannot legally bring them in. And so as to a number that needs to come in, we know that we did the homeless census. We know it was low. We know there was over 800 people outside and in our shelters. So there is a significant capacity shortage.
Mr. Gill, for the record, would you just introduce yourself, please?
I apologize. Louis Gill. I'm with the Bakersfield Homeless Center and the Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault.
Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman, to answer your question, my name's Carlos Baldovinos, Executive Director at the Mission at Kern County. To answer your question, the Mission at Kern County, we're at capacity nearly every night. We actually house between two of our campuses about 300 individuals per night. That's including women with children at our Oak Street location. So with a number that I, and I don't, I hate throwing numbers out there, but I, I could probably tell you, we're probably good 500 to 700 people. Additional beds needed on a nightly basis to house individuals. If we go through the riverbeds, if we go through all different parts of Bakersfield.
Okay. So 80, 80 beds will help. You know, it's hard to, I just wanted to hear what you folks might say, because, you know, on, how many beds are we ultimately going to need on an ongoing basis, assuming the problem maybe just doesn't get worse? But it's hard, with the population going, it's hard to say that it's going to shrink significantly over the next decade, just because a lot of other things society would have to change to make that happen. I was just wondering, you know, if we had an additional 400 beds or 500 beds, just, in a sense, we ultimately need a target, because we can't really quantify the problem and know this is how much capital we'll need, and this is what the ongoing cost will be. Long-term, you know, a goal until we, we have you folks, you're the ones who can estimate better than we can, you know, city our size, what's realistic? Are we going to need another 400, 500 beds, permanent beds? It's helpful eventually to work on a target. Once you have a target and you quantify it, it's, you have a better chance of reaching it. It's not, it's not fuzzy anymore. Say, okay, we need $20 million, whatever we need. But once you have it, then you start working towards that. So at some point, it'd be nice to, you're the best experts. I know it's just a guess, but it's an educated guess. So at some point, it'd be nice to know what you folks need, we will need on a permanent basis.
I mean, this is an ongoing problem. We were back here, I think it was last, this past March, and gave you all the presentation. The need has grown, and, and we feel it's going to continue to grow until there are certain things that we put in place. And I, I do believe, Louis, that even these 80 beds, that they're potentially going to be added. It's going to make a little bit of a dent, but it's not going to solve the problem.
I think this is exactly the first step that we need. We're going to have to work with the city. We're going to have to work with the county. We're going to have to all work together to address this. I know that there are single unaccompanied women out on the street that need a place to come inside, because the bottom line is the streets are eventually fatal. And so as we move towards that goal, I think this is a great start.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to, Councilmember Freeman, I just wanted to add one other component related to this funding. The HEEP funding, as you saw from the presentation, you know, originated from the, the effort of the Big 11 mayors, and, and, and we received, you know, the 500 million allocated in this budget cycle. I think there's a push to, to really see how well this money can be put out on the streets and how impactful it can be, and our, and I think the hope is that if it's successful, and it really is streamlined, gets out on the streets and starts having the impact, that there could be additional rounds of funding in future years, and I think that's something that even the, the Big 11 mayors are looking to advocate in, in current or in future legislative cycles. So what we're really trying to do is take this one-time funding, obviously it kind of lends itself a little bit better to capital uses, and connect it with the, the shelter space needs, and, and try to increase as much as we could, you know, with the existing facilities that, that are there, and we think we've achieved that with, with, with this program that you had outlined for you. But the hope is that there's additional funding that will come in future years, because this has been successful.
Thanks.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tellia, I just wanted to underscore a point you just, you just made. This is one-time funding, correct?
Correct.
And it's, the purpose is for capital costs. That begs the question about operating costs, maintenance costs of these beds that we're now creating. Is there a projected number of how much that may be, and is there a plan of action to actually fulfill that operating cost as we move forward?
You're correct in, in the fact that this is capital dollars, this is one-time dollars, so we are trying to marry it with, you know, expansion of the facilities. That will logically bring additional costs to support the beds that are being expanded at both facilities. We've had a little bit of discussion with both providers. They've acknowledged that that will be an issue they'll have to deal with. We do not have at this point in time a, a direct solution for that, but that has not discouraged the providers from taking advantage of this opportunity to expand their facilities. I would not be surprised if we have, you know, additional conversations about that component of this at, at a later date.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parlie.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, if you'd clarify something for me, was there a direct correlation between the HEEP funds and the pit count, point in time count?
Yes, there was. The, the 2017 numbers were used as a foundation for the allocation of the, of the three different pots of money that I, that I showed you. So that is one lesson that was learned in, in the way the, the methodology was created for the HEEP program. And so, you know, our numbers as a community, and I believe it was 810 was the number that was used in 2017 for Bakersfield, Kern County, were on the lower end of the statewide kind of numbers. And so that's why I think our allocation was a little bit lower, certainly for the, the Big 11 cities. It was even lower when you look at the continuums, because there was a provision in there that allowed the continuums of care that were in the, the bottom third of those numbers to actually apply for a waiver of this resolution. But because we were in the large city category, we did not have that opportunity, so that's why this is before you. So that was a long answer, but the quick answer is yes, the, the pit count numbers are tied to funding, it appears, and it may be going forward as well.
Okay. I know we're going to have a broader conversation about this in the future, but I just want to highlight the importance of the count and, and going forward that we provide resources, or at least have a discussion about resources that are provided so we have an accurate count when that comes up. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlie, just for context, Santa Ana, Anaheim, which has a lower population than we do, their pit count reported was over 4,700.
Thank you, Mayor. By any chance, Mayor, do you know what type of resources those cities provided for the pit count, if any?
We're all required to furnish certain information. It's a federal program.
Yeah, I just wonder if those cities provided resources themselves to help or aid in the pit count.
I, I'm not aware of the details. I, I think it's done many different ways, but there clearly has been a push from our providers to make sure that we have more resources this year in personnel as we do the count.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You know what, Steve? I'd ask that we reach out to those cities and see if they provide any resources to assist in that.
Sure. And just to, to add, I can tell you that, that the emphasis on the pit count numbers, given that it's now tied to a lot of these, these funding opportunities, there's been an emphasis with the collaborative and, and the providers to look at new creative ways to swell the ranks of the support that, that is utilized, to go out there and gather that data. So I would imagine we'd have some additional conversations on that in, in the coming months as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, could you go back to that slide where it's the table that breaks out the, the funding? Yeah. Yeah, so you touched on it, but I'm not sure I understood.
Sure.
What is the CDBG slash program income funding of 1.1 million dollars?
So there was some past year's CDBG dollars that were unallocated or unspent. We're able to identify those dollars, and there was some, some program income from what is a, a remnant of some redevelopment efforts that were done, and perhaps Ms. Kitchen wants to elaborate on, on what those, those are. Is that good?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tellia. So essentially, it was program savings from past projects that were allocated in past years. Occasionally, we are very efficient, and we have some extra revenues, and we're able to allocate those to additional projects in the future.
What were the projects? When were they?
They were several years back. I can get you the exact details and numbers. I think they were related to curb gutter and sidewalk projects, and I believe a housing project, but we can get the additional details for you.
Yeah, I'd like to know when the savings were realized, because it's, it's November of 2018, and this is the first I've, I, unless I missed it, it's the first I've heard that we had over a million dollars in savings sitting in CDBG funds.
A point of clarification, close to half of that money was leftover money from the Neighborhood Stabilization Program that is no longer in place. That program ended several years ago, and there was a point in time when that NSP money was at the, kind of in a limbo point. It has since been decided that that would be converted to CDBG money, which makes it available for these kinds of projects.
Okay, so that accounts for maybe half of it. So I'd, I'd like to understand the, the other half. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we go to a motion? I want to thank our providers. You have done an exceptional job in working together with us, and Mr. Gill, you use that word, "together." This is the issue that... This is the issue that takes up more time for us probably than anything else, and it's a growing issue. Thank you for the wonderful collaboration and your outstanding leadership. We really appreciate that. So, Mr. Telia, we're going to need a motion to approve the resolution. Vice Mayor?
I will move to approve staff recommendation of the resolution.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Thank you, Mr. Telia.
Counsel and mayor statements.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to need some help with the city attorney here on item eight consent calendar. I had a conflict on a couple items I forgot to mention, because I got mixed up on the numbers, items eight F and J I did not vote on, because I have a client that is involved in those projects.
Vice Mayor Smith, that's fine. The clerk will make sure that your vote is not recorded for those items.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, the Sister City Association and I would like to invite the council to the inaugural Sister City Garden Festival in our Sister City Gardens at Mill Creek on Saturday, November 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And at 10:00 a.m., we will have an opening ceremonies of sorts, where we would like the council, the city manager, and anyone else who'd like to join us to be part of that opening ceremony. But we hope that this will be an annual event to highlight the wonderful facilities we have at Mill Creek, and to view our Sister City Gardens, and to welcome the entire city of Bakersfield to join us that day. So I hope to see you all there.
Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the people of Ward Three for allowing me to sit in this chair for another four years. I'm very much appreciative, and good night.
Congratulations to all of you, Councilmember Rivera, Weir, Smith, and Parlie, for on your reelections. Vice, Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it was a pleasure hosting the students for Team Government Day, and certainly appreciate the staff for the time spent to make their time worthwhile. It's wonderful to see the enthusiasm and hear the comments, and certainly obvious it was very enjoyable for them, and they were thrilled to be here. And the last few years, we've given them the opportunity to say more, to sit in the seats, and they were thrilled with it. So I think we have a good way of making, helping them make the most of their time, and just feeling that they've just had a good afternoon, so very nice. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you to our police department for putting on a spectacular community outreach for trick-or-treat and meet-and-greet. There were hundreds of people lined up there, and I could see that they were having a wonderful time, so thank you for your efforts with community outreach. Seeing no other requests for comments, we are adjourned at 6:31.